Yeah, I want to get going. Would you like to be the choir director here in this effort?
Yes, thank you Commissioner Lenzmeyer, members of the board and Planning Commission. Thanks for joining us tonight for yet another meeting to talk about SHAPE STURNS and where we go from here. So this meeting is being webcast, so by way of giving a tad bit of background, SHAPE STURNS 2040 is our new updated comprehensive plan. This will guide our growth and other development for a period of approximately 10 years. As a result of that 18-month planning process, we have some work to do by way of looking at some ordinance changes, policy, keeping a website updated, reaching out to townships and cities in different ways. And so the purpose of tonight's meeting is twofold. One, to bring the Planning Commission and the board together and have a discussion about what would you like on the planning meeting, to have the discussion on the ordinance updates. And then secondly, solidify the list of priorities for those ordinance changes as we heard from the comprehensive plan process. So maybe what we could do is do a quick introduction because we do have the public on. This is being webcast, so perhaps everyone could go around and indicate your name and which district and what board you serve on, please. And we could start with District Number One, County Commissioner.
Hi, Lee Lenzmeyer, Fourth Commissioner District, which is southeast corner of Sterns County. And I'm not on the Planning Commission, but I have plenty of other committee assignments. Let's see, anybody, any other county board members that are in attendance? Would you introduce yourself?
Well, I can go next, I guess being Lee is four, I'll be five. Steve Notch, Fifth District County Commissioner, western part of Sterns County.
Okay, I'll try again, I think I was muted. So Terrell Clark, District One, far eastern part of Sterns County.
District Attorney Jeff Mergan, middle of the county.
Mike Prell, District Five, west side of the colony.
Joe Persky, County Commissioner, District Two, Sartell, Wake Park, Cape Hill, Leesock, Township, St. Wendell Township. Also, I am on the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you, board members, Planning Commission members. Mike Prell, thanks for introducing yourself. Other Planning Commission members, we can start with District Number One.
District One, Jason Wienerman.
District Two.
District Two, I am Sean Blackburn, and I'm currently the Planning Commission representative on the Board of Adjustment as well.
Thank you, Sean, District Three.
District Three, Jason Kohn.
All right, thanks, Jason. How about Four, District Four?
District Ken Mossman, Department of Planning Commission.
Okay, and we hear from Mike, District Five, and then we have two at-large members.
Jeff Bertrum, at-large.
And Rich Blankish, at-large, and I am the Planning Commission representative on the Sterns County Park Board.
Good, thank you, everyone, for meeting. And as we continue to meet in these virtual formats, it is challenging, so thanks for joining us for yet another virtual meeting. Again, the goal and the purpose is to get us together, basically verify staff's direction as we move forward to writing some ordinances as we heard during the comp plan process, and then determine who is going to be involved in that process. Lastly, before we move on to the next slide, is just a reminder that one of our past comp plan and zoning ordinance consultants keep reminding us is we're not adopting a zoning ordinance, we're implementing the comp plan. So if we're ever veering off track with our zoning ordinance, we just need to remember, what did we hear during the comprehensive plan? What are the pillars? What are the policy areas? And that's where we can focus our time. So a few things in terms of what have we been doing since SHAPE STURNS was adopted in July? We've updated various documents. These are our pillars that we spent a lot of time during the comprehensive plan talking about, our five pillar areas, our focus areas. So these are what guides us through all of those different scenarios. And, oh, I lost. Okay, here we got our comp plan goals and policies. So the Planning Commission has been using these already, as well as the Board of Adjustment. These are the comp plan goals and objectives. So what you're seeing here is going to be what is in each various CUP rezoning plat application, is the comp plan goals and objectives. So we have them broke out with the various pillars and the policies. We're playing along with some different formats for the Planning Commission on how to make that most effective. And so these are what we've been using for our plan, the goals and objectives. You'll be seeing these more often. We might look at changing them a bit in terms of formats and such as we move forward. Lastly, is our township recommendation form. And the Planning Commission has also seen this. As we heard from a lot of our township officials at the Albany meeting that we had pre-coup end, we were able to have a meeting to kind of release the plan, is that townships wanted additional ways to engage. So this is a new form, a new document that we're going to be using. We've already shared it with townships, and we're asking them to weigh in on their level of review. So do they think a particular request is consistent? And if so, how? When did they meet? So we have basically a checkbox formula for them to go through and quickly look at the goals and policies of the comp plan and help guide the Planning Commission and the county commissioners in reviewing a particular request. The LEASAS score, which we talk a lot about, is also part of this document. And so the LEASAS score will be typically filled out before an applicant goes to the township, so the township is able to see what that score is. Staff will work on that. So this is our township recommendation form. So I've emailed it to townships, we've mailed copies to townships, we're going to, you know, we'll solicit a little bit of feedback without bugging them too much. So we're excited to try to use this as we move forward. And the last thing I want to show before we get into the real meat of the meeting is our comprehensive plan, which I'm sure most of you involved in the board and the Planning Commission have seen. This is our live website. And so each of these areas are pillars. And if you dive into one of the pillars, then it goes into the various goals and objectives. One of the things that I just want to highlight about the website is that we are going to be reintegrating an email server, so if somebody wants to send us their email address and get email updates for meetings like tonight or meetings like we're going to be having in the future for planning meetings, they're able to do that online very shortly. And there's also an opportunity for the public at any time to leave a comment about the plan or about our department. Those emails will go to Shelley and I, and we will respond to those. So if you haven't checked it out, check out the website. I'm not going to click on this, but this is the video. It's kind of a comp plan in three minutes. You know, what is a comp plan and how are we going to use it? So I would urge you to check that out at some point. Okay, so this is the document that we really wanted to spend some time talking about tonight and have some dialogue with the Planning Commission and the county board. But before I go on to that, is there any questions? You want me to dig into anything a little bit deeper, or should we continue going? Oh, yes, thank you, Shelley. So one of the strategies that we've used in the past when we're in a planning process or we're working on a comprehensive plan or zoning ordinance amendments is having the idea of a parking lot. So as we move forward to having these zoning ordinance amendment meetings, there may be topics that come up that weren't discussed in the comp plan or aren't brought up tonight. And the idea with that is we'll put them in a parking lot. So as to not distract from the meeting agenda, they'll be put in a parking lot, and then we'll take them up at a later time as we can prioritize them with the group. So the document that I'm going to share and what I've emailed and mailed to some of you is basically our proposed review checklist, right? So the idea behind this is what did we hear during the comprehensive plan process about various issues? And how long do we think it will take to tackle them? When do we think we can tackle them? What's the priority? And so I'd really like to go through this list and receive some input, feedback, thumbs up, thumbs down, kind of somewhere in the middle on each of these issues. Okay, so without any other discussion, number one is shoreline and vegetative alterations. I think we've heard during the comprehensive plan process that we do need to look at our standards for shoreline alterations, veg alterations. Commissioner Mergan's mentioned before, what are other counties doing, comp counties and/or surrounding counties. So Nick Newman, who is on the call as well, as is Jennifer Buckantine and Mark Lateral from our department. Nick Newman deals with our shoreline alterations. He has started this review process already, has some really great ideas about some potential changes to both the shoreline and vegetative alteration section of our ordinance. So with that, we would, you know, we'll have our standard stakeholders. I know this is one of the things Mike Williams wanted, just to make sure, and Mike's also on the call, that we were cognizant of, we involve stakeholders. So our stakeholders are obviously going to be, you know, our lake shoreowners, water district's, contractors, things like that. We put this as a high priority because of the fact that we really like to get some of these ordinance changes completed before the 2021 construction season. And that really means we kind of have to start talking about them now, because some of these things are going to take time. So as it relates to shoreline and veg alterations, we are proposing, and I do see discrepancy here, the number of meetings, I don't know if we can get through shoreline in one meeting, so I was proposing two. And that would be an October and a November type meeting for shoreline alterations. So is there any comments, feedback, things that you'd like us to consider specifically in our discussion?
I got to apologize, I'm blocked out, so I didn't hear anything.
Should we be including a role on the lake shore discussion of lake associations, lake improvement districts, those sorts of associated but involved organizations? What would be a good way to get them involved? Or if we got them involved, are we making it worse? You know, we're getting more cooks involved in making the soup, so to speak. I think that might merit consideration somewhere in this effort.
No, Lee, I would have a tendency to agree with you. We don't always do that, but oftentimes we're hearing from lake associations saying, you know, why don't you people do something about it? Because they feel that their hands are bound, that they really are just, you know, what I want to say, an opinionated group but have no power. And so, yeah, by all means, if we can have some of the lake associations involved, I would not mind, you know, seeing something like that.
And it looks like you've got them listed. They've obviously been great in the aquatic invasive species work as well. And I'm guessing this is not an exhaustive list, Angie. I was thinking soil and water conservation as well.
Yes, definitely. Commissioners, we'll definitely involve all of those groups and reach out to them individually and maybe in some group meetings, et cetera. I know with the riparian owners, the tricky part is that it doesn't sound like the county might be doing a spring newsletter. We were going to take on to that. But we can, we'll talk a little bit more about that in terms of if we wanted to notify every lake shoreowner in the county of some potential changes to shoreline and veg alterations and RVs, which is next, that would be, you know, a substantial investment, but it might be worthwhile to get the word out. So that's one of the other things that we're considering. Okay, while moving on to...
Si.
Yes, Sean.
Could you do something that maybe we do some kind of a blanket mailing of just something like a postcard of saying, are you aware of the new changes? And have you seen or heard of SHAPE STURNS and et cetera? Just to do something.
Yes, great idea, Sean. I think that we do want to definitely capitalize on the SHAPE STURNS website and have updates on there. So I think directing people there, in addition to maybe some pools once in a while, things like that, might be interesting, too. Okay, moving on, the next topic area is recreational vehicles in shoreline. If you remember earlier in the season, I did email the Planning Commission and Board and just said, kind of try to think back to when we talked about this approximately a year and a half ago. There was concern with multiple RVs on a single shoreline lot, and we were getting multiple complaints, multiple violations. And so the board did tweak the ordinance as it relates to that, and then found that maybe we made it a bit too restrictive. And so our violations have still been coming in. Enforcement has been held in obedience until we take another look at this. And so throughout the summer, the list of multiple RVs on a single shoreline lot have been increasing. And so that is definitely a high priority, I think. It's going to be hard for us to, for our department to go through another construction season or summer, lake season with the rules that we have. And so RVs in shoreline, again, are a high priority, and we do have some ideas for you to consider. I think we can definitely tackle that in one meeting and perhaps even tack something else onto that. Any thoughts or further explanation on the RVs in shoreline? Okay, moving on to limited rule commercial. So this is a new term, and it may not stay the same. The committee may pick a different term. But what we're looking at here is allowing some business flexibility in the ag areas. As you all remember during the SHAPE STURNS meetings and all the public engagement we went through, we heard a lot about flexibility. We need to be more flexible. And so one of the ideas that the comprehensive plan talked about for implementation was implementing a new use, if you will. So, you know, we have limited rule manufacturing. This would be a limited rule commercial where, you know, a wedding barn would be an example, or someone that wants to create more of a rule event venue type situation. So this is an area that we did place as a high priority because we did believe that it was something that we heard loud and clear during the process, that we need to be a little bit more flexible, knowing that this use would be a conditional use. And then we would build standards into that conditional use, performance standards for what they would need to meet. So that's the direction that we're going with limited rule commercial. I've started writing a little bit, you know, for the group at some point to consider. We've looked at other counties, so we have that information as well. Obviously, we do have some business owners very interested in this, those that may be operating right now under a different category but want to bump up into a more intense category. So we would involve those business owners along the way as well. And I'm just going to rope the next one into this and see if there's any other further questions or comments on that. Temporary use special event. This isn't something that you probably hear or see of, but it's because this provision in our ordinance is provisional, which means it's administrative. So the department goes ahead and we issue those provisional uses for temporary use special event. So there's a limited time each year that a property owner can apply for this provisional use. So we do have some commercial venues that are falling into that, but again, they want to go a little bit more, and they want to go a little bit bigger. So we would be revisiting that section of the ordinance with the committee to determine where's that line, or should that line be drawn. And this would be an area that I think, all these areas are going to be difficult, but this is going to be an area where we're going to have to get comfortable in the gray, because it's not going to be a lot of black and white. This is going to be an area where the Planning Commission and the board will make some decisions on, is it compatible in the area? Does it fit? What does the township say? Things like that. All right, anything else before we move on to housing? Okay, the next to focus on housing, the first is workforce housing. This would be mainly for, well primarily would be for feedlot owners. We've had some inquiries over the years and have some people who would like to have more than one home on a farm, or have more multi-family dwellings, like apartment type scenarios. Mostly, it's for the dairy industry, those that are milking 24 hours a day, although we have had some poultry owners contact us about this as well. I've done a little bit of work on contacting other counties, and ironically, a number of our adjacent counties allow this as a permitted use already in the multi-family dwelling situation. And this is not something that we do currently allow. So that's our workforce housing concept would be, where do we want to allow it? What kind of standards would we want to see for that? Is it permitted? Is it conditional? Is it interim? Those are all decisions that we would ask the committee to make and recommend to the board.
Angie, if I may, dairy advisory would be a good one on that one, too.
That's a good idea, Steve.
Yes, good catch. We will definitely include them. The other, was somebody going to type in there? The other topic area that, again, we, as a department, we've been hearing a lot of requests for, what you might hear is accessory dwelling units or ADUs, you know, the mother-in-law apartment scenario, basically inquiries for second home with the baby boomers, et cetera, allowing some other options. What would that look like? Where would it be? Who do we want to involve? We did actually have a little bit of budget money left on our comp plan, so we are working with Lance Bernard and one of his colleagues on this issue in particular, because it's an area that we probably have the least experience with, and all of these changes otherwise will be handled by staff. So this is an area where, I know I've reached out to CMBA on the comp plan, and I think we would reach out to them again. We would reach out to the banking and the lending industry, because that can complicate things, or I should say, our rules can complicate their procedures. So we would want to involve them as well. So before we move on to feedlots, any thoughts or comments on any of the housing topics?
Angie, Jason Wienerman here. I wonder if we want to include insurers, the insurance market on these housing and dwelling?
Yes, very good idea, Jason, definitely. Okay, moving on to feedlots. And Becky Schlerf, our feedlot supervisor, is unable to be with us tonight, but she is aware of this issue. And Sean, I'm sure could weigh in on the topics that we've had discussion at the Board of Adjustment lately in the last couple of months related to feedlot variances as it specifically relates to family members. I think what we're continually seeing and hearing is that if somebody wants to build a new house, lending-wise, it's easier for them to have it on a separate parcel, but then it's not meeting the feedlot setback. So there are a number of counties that Becky's found and I've found through my association that do allow an exemption, if you will, for family. We do know that that can get gray as well and can get tricky, but I think that it warrants a conversation, and the Board of Adjustment specifically has asked us to have that conversation related to feedlot variances. So I don't know, Sean, not to put you on the spot, if you have anything specifically you want to add about that?
Well, we do definitely need to have that conversation, and it makes perfect sense because of how it comes up and exactly what you said. These people, these families are being forced to have to parcel their land in order to allow family members to build close by. And it seems like it's a waste of time and energy for it to be a process at all. It should be more streamlined, and especially with those kind of connections. But I'm somewhat torn, because I look at the property as you go down the line and how that the changes we make stay with the property and not with the family. So that's one of the things that I am concerned about with the discussions of the changes in that variance.
Thank you, Sean. That's helpful. And as you see here as well, for the stakeholders, we would be looking at involving dairy advisory, feedlot review, farmers, lenders. We'd like the Board of Adjustment's feedback as well, since they are the group to hear these variances. Anything else on feedlots?
Okay. Another place that soil and water conservation might make sense, too, not wanting to use up all of their time.
Got it. Yeah, we can definitely involve them. I think that makes sense. Okay, moving on to SSTS's sub-surface sewage treatment systems. I should have taken that out. Obviously, that ordinance is a septic ordinance, and Mark Lateral is in the call. He's our environmental health supervisor, in case there's specific questions. I think that this idea also originated from the Board of Adjustment, and staff sees the need for a change as well. Currently, holding tanks are not allowed for commercial businesses, and there are certainly opportunities for low-volume users for a holding tank to be allowed without a variance. So we are proposing to talk about that as well. Okay, no comments on the septic ordinance. We would move on next to a few subdivision changes, plating requirements, township plat approval. These areas both come from ideas originated from some local surveyors. Mike Williams, Commissioner Persky, and Commissioner Notch, and I met with, and Brian Henin, our county surveyor, met with a few surveyors last winter and talked a little bit about some of their ideas as it relates to plating in Sterns County. And so one of the ideas is consider modifying the plating threshold. So what that means right now is that if you're creating a new tract in Sterns County for building purposes and it's over 20 acres, you don't have to plat. If it's under 20 acres, you have to plat. So there's been some talk about changing that, perhaps to 10 acres. And so we would like to have that discussion and allow some surveyors to weigh in on why they think that makes sense. The lending industry, I should have listed as a stakeholder, we would definitely involve them, because there's some lending ramifications. them because there's some lending ramifications with 10 acres as well. And with that, with the other change to the subdivision ordinance processes, we have a lot of townships that, that want to be involved in zoning, but when they, when they only see a plat maybe once every two, three years, they're a little less concerned or less interested to be involved. The state statute for township involvement in plating is only required for townships of a certain size and we don't have any townships meeting that threshold. And so what, what this looks like right now in our ordinance is that the county subdivision ordinance requires township involvement for all the plats. And we've heard from a few townships that really would want to opt out of that and say, you know what, if it's a one-lot plat and it's plating off an existing building site, we really don't need to have them come to our township. And so rather than not requiring it, the idea was, is adopting an opt-out provision. So basically if a township doesn't want to be involved in the plating process for, let's say, a minor plat, a one-lot plat, they could, they could opt out. So the subdivision ordinance could be modified to allow that. And with subdivision, I, I would like to say that when the Board spent some time on this, I think it was probably three, three or four years ago, those changes have been working really, really well. Administrative plats where they don't need a public hearing, they don't go to planning committee, they don't go to planning commission, they don't even go to the county board anymore. Very streamlined, very, a little bit more user-friendly. So I, I do think the subdivision ordinance overall is working. There could be a few tweaks or at least consideration. Last, in, in the kind of the, the medium category, I'll throw this in, certificate of survey requirement. This also came from the surveyors group that we met with. As a matter of zoning administration, we do require certificates of survey often for projects. I would say probably 50 to 75% more than what we did when, when I started here 20 years ago. It was, it was not really a common thing. But with investments in land and lenders' involvement and basically the desire to know where your property lines are before you invest in a new building project, we do require more surveys and we do see more surveys just voluntarily. There has been discussion, as other counties do, they have a requirement for a survey for a particular sized project. And so that is something that we indicated we would throw out to, to this group at some point when we look at changing ordinances to see if there's an appetite for that.
Angie, this is Rich. I'm just thinking of the recent applicant we had in our last month's meeting and he wanted to have two parking spots on the road right away. And I think if we require surveys in particular situations where somebody's going to take a, what was originally intended to be a single-family dwelling and, and then turn it into a seasonal rental, I think all parties involved, it would make sense to have a requirement for a survey of the property.
Thank you, Rich, for that, for that input. I, I think that is a good example of, of a situation where a survey would be, be helpful. And more than likely, we will get in that circumstance due to the, due to the questions the Planning Commission had on parking. Okay, well, before we move on to the low category, not to say that these aren't important, but they, they are, they're just really minor things, some fence changes, attached garage standard. Right now, currently, we have a provision where your attached garage, your square footage can't be bigger than, than your house. And in the ag areas, I think that we maybe need to revisit that, especially with a lot of people building shouses, you know, a shed house. So the, that ratio is, is not attainable in most situations. Moving on to the next item, our Section 723 relates to zoning standards for placement of structures in the ag area. And for those Planning Commission and Board members who are around for our last comprehensive plan and our last set of large zoning ordinance changes, you might remember that we, we enacted a section in the ordinance that if you want to build in the ag area and you're, you have a tract that's over 10 acres, I could be wrong, it could be 20, then we basically have to look at where are they building and does it make sense? Are they dividing up the field? Where's the driveway going to go, et cetera? And what we've really been finding over the last several years is that, and I know we have Ken and others with farming background, but we, we've heard from a lot of people that requiring us, the county, to approve where the driveway is going might be a little intrusive. In, in most cases, the farmer who will continue to rent that field is not worried about the driveway. They're just going to farm on either side of it. So we'd just like to have a bit of discussion on, on eliminating the driveway requirement. Moving on to the next item is outdoor storage and setbacks. So in certain zoning districts, our commercial and industrial, we do have a setback provision for outdoor storage. We are, we are seeing some of our industrial parks, you know, near, near Linden, Clearwater, out in Wakefield Township who would like to build their fence on the property line and, and basically have their storage area right on the line. And so we'd like to have that discussion if that's, that's a good idea to eliminate those setbacks. Again, along with knowing where the property line is, we've definitely heard that interest. And last but not least, the last two items were actually brought up at the Planning Commission meeting. I think Commissioner Persky had talked about the, the possibility of, do we want to extend our, our public hearing notification requirement? For example, with conditional use and interim uses by state law, we're required to notice a quarter mile for plats and rezonings. It's a half mile. I think the thought was thrown out there, should that be a greater distance?
Angie, Mike Prowl here. I'm, I'm totally in favor of extending the, the distance from the permit, I think maybe a, a half a mile, depending on the circumstance.
Thank you.
What type of use would be, would be interference?
He's muted. Oh, Lee, you're muted for, for that last part. Could you repeat that, please?
Use.
You are muted again, Lee. Sorry, I can't hear you.
Okay, probably a good thing.
This is, this is Joe Seiya. I, I think when we heard about the, the shooting range and then also Milk and Honey as an event venue, I think that, and also some of the gravel pits, I think that's maybe a rationale, maybe to expand it a little bit, just the sight, the noise and the smell of, of issues. So, and maybe even traffic as well. So that, those, that's my rationale for increasing the distance.
Okay, good, thank you. And last but not least, findings of fact. Again, this was brought up by the Planning Commission. I think Jeff Bertram had brought it up maybe a few months ago. There's a question about, about economics. Were economics part of the request considered and does that need to be part of the, the findings of fact? The answer is right now, it's in the ordinance as a requirement. So if we would want to look at eliminating or changing that question, that's why it's on this list, because it would need to be an ordinance amendment. And then at the last meeting, I think there was some discussion related to condensing the questions. Some of them are maybe a bit redundant and so we could definitely, again, look at how the ordinance is written and making sure that our findings of fact match something that's usable for the Board and the Planning Commission.
Hey, Angie. This might go back to more of the housing stuff or is there, can you explain, how come some cities require a certificate of occupancy? Counties ever do that?
Yeah, so Commissioner Notch, the, the county does not enforce the building code. So certificates of compliance or certificates of occupancy rather are required for building code purposes.
Oh, okay. All right, thanks.
So we often write letters and emails to lenders saying Stearns County does not issue certificates of occupancy because I think it's required to close out a loan or, you know, do, do a particular part of a process.
Yeah, or to move into the house if you're in the city. Okay, thanks.
What does a lender require?
Commissioner Lenzmeyer, your question was, what does a lender require? I'm not sure at what point in the process they require it. I just know that we are asked to, to indicate to a lender that we don't provide that since we don't enforce the building code.
A lot of times if it's, gets sold on the secondary market, it's a requirement.
So this is, this is kind of the first list. I, I would say these are, these are, again, are the priorities. As we, as we proposed, and I'm really glad that we could get this meeting done tonight because we'd like to go, move forward on, on having these meetings, as we were proposing would be meeting once a month, but again, maybe we should have some dialogue on, on who the committee will be comprised of. And then we could definitely talk about some different meeting formats. If, if there's some desire to meet less often and lengthier meetings or every other week, daytime, nighttime, things like that, we're, we're open and we just need some direction from, from the Board on that. So in terms of committee composition, we threw out three options. We can definitely talk about some others, but we have a very dedicated Planning Commission for which I know our office is very thankful. They put a lot of time in, in meetings, outside of meetings. It's, it's pretty amazing. So obviously the Planning Commission would be the, the most likely candidate for helping write some ordinance changes. So we could task the Planning Commission with that. Second option would be Planning Commission and the commissioners. We, we don't want to exclude the commissioners. If, if you want to be involved in these meetings, our option three would be a subset of, of both. And I think when Shelley and I presented this to the commissioners a few weeks ago, the idea was have this meeting first and let's talk about everything that we need to know and then have a dialogue on, on that committee composition. So I'm going to take a pause and, and let that discussion happen.
Planning Commission there.
Lee, you're going in and out. We can't hear you now.
Okay, I want to see the Planning Commission involved for sure, relative to county board members. Maybe it ought to be a voluntary thing. You want to go, you look at the agenda, looks interesting, you go. And, but isn't something that necessarily pertains to your set of interests, you don't go. And in that case, should they vote?
I like that idea, Lee. What if we made sure we had at least, hopefully there would be enough interest that we at least have one board member at each meeting?
All right. We can ask it a count.
Lee, I know you just said something either really important or very clever, but you're muted.
All right. I don't think it was either, but nevertheless, it just got back to the voluntary aspect of the board member, county board members. But if it's a voluntary deal, should they get a?
I'm not sure what he means.
I think the question was, should they get a vote if it's a voluntary thing at the board level?
If I could just chime in, my opinion would be, we're, we'll get the last call, we'll come at the board meeting anyway after it's vetted by the, let's say, Planning Commission. I, I would more like it if you, you know, if they want to volunteer to show up just to participate but not vote, I'd be fine with that.
Steve, I was going to volunteer you for some participation if you don't mind, because when it comes to some of the things as far as feedlots, setbacks, rural, you, you've got half the county out there and oftentimes we're dealing with issues in your townships. So when it's something that's pertinent to your interest of your part of the county, by all means, I, I guess I'd like to have you there maybe at those meetings.
Yeah, and I wouldn't mind. I mean, sitting on Dairy Advisory, we've talked about the housing issues and stuff like that, so, you know, I'd be willing to go to some of those meetings.
And I'm certainly interested in going to some as well.
But I would say let the Planning Commission bring the recommendations forward.
Agree.
From an organizational standpoint, do we then have problems if we have three board members at a meeting? Is, is that problematic or not?
Commissioner Persky, so what we did with the comp plan process when we had our Shape Stearns meetings in Wakefield Township, we noticed them all as public meetings. So we assumed that there was going to be a quorum of both the Planning Commission and the county board. So unless Mike Williams has a, a different idea, we, we would make that same assumption and, and play it safe. And that way, if three or more commissioners showed up, then we would be compliant because we don't want to run into any issues there.
Good call. I'm fine with that.
Excuse me, that'll work fine, I think. I think it needs to be, I mean, we can make it clear that it's not a county board meeting and we're not going to be making, you know, taking action. But that's, that's the way we can do it.
This is Commissioner Blankish. I was just thinking, what if, as whatever committee is formed progresses through the different items? Like, I have a feeling it's going to take more than a couple of meetings to resolve it, but possibly as we get through a number of items, they can be presented to the county commissioners at their, one of their monthly meetings and, and be updated just in case one or two or three of them didn't have time to go to the meetings as we were discussing and formulating the ordinances. Just an idea.
Yes, Rich, thanks for that comment. And actually, I was going to, to say that as well. So because of the fact that we don't have a consultant leading us through this process, this is all going to be staff, staff time. And so we, we aren't going to have a full set of minutes for these meetings, but we will, we'll take notes, obviously. And these meetings, as far as us meeting virtually, which I think we're going to be here for a while, the meetings of this committee will be webcast. And so, yes, and recorded. So definitely, Rich, we would. be hopefully getting something on the books already for October. You don't have to get your calendars out this moment, but if you don't email, block my emails from coming, that would be great, because I'll be sending an email here in the next couple of days asking for probably a doodle poll, and it won't be an emergency like it was to get this meeting scheduled, but probably within the next week or so. And so I also wouldn't mind, I know typically, these meetings are in the evening, because we have people that work during the day, staff's available, evening or daytime, if there's a preference on either, I would say probably from the planning commission standpoint, because you're going to be the entity at most of these meetings. Feel free to chime in now, or if you're not comfortable chiming in now, you can email me separately as well with your thoughts on that.
Angie, I guess I want to be clear, as far as these meetings, and these are going to take place separate from the regular planning commission meetings, is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner Persky. I think due to the volume of items on the planning commission agendas of recent past, the idea was that these be a working session, yes. And usually, anywhere after two hours, everybody's kind of done, so we try to keep them to about two hours.
No, I would agree with that. Sometimes after planning commission, we're kind of punch drunk, and yeah, it's hard to do business.
So yes, good point. This would be a separate meeting.
Angie, Jason Crowe here. Just a thought, I mean, I think if we're going to go during the day, because everyone's life's busy, work schedule in evenings, like either early in the day or late in the day. Midday is tough, but it's a lot easier to schedule around something if it's going to start at like 3:30 in the afternoon. You can plan your days then around those time periods. Or first thing in the morning real early would be cool, too. Just my two cents.
Any other thoughts from planning commission members on this? Obviously, we would avoid Tuesday mornings because of the board, but again, we want to do and propose what works for most. We can make either daytime morning or later afternoon work for us, or we can do an evening-type scenario as well.
Angie, this is Sean. As far as I'm concerned, evenings always work very well for me.
Jason Wienerman, same. Evenings work a little bit better, but I can make some of the days work.
Angie, Mike Proll here. Evenings are great, afternoons work, too.
Angie, this is Rich. Evenings are fine with me. Afternoons, late, are fine with me. Early, early morning is fine with me. I'm wide open.
Good, thank you all for that input. I don't know what's popping in my head right now, is maybe we, although the other person we didn't hear from was Jeff Bertram. Jeff, what do you think? You're the chair of our planning commission. Can you hear?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Jeff.
I'd suggest that you do the doodle poll and then find out when people can do it, either early morning or mid-afternoon, do a combination of things, and maybe meet a combination of different time arrangements.
Thank you. That's actually what I was thinking, too. So I'll throw some options out there, and just be patient as we get something scheduled here. So kind of leading into the last slide, next steps would be, again, I've stated that I would be sending you an email, but with a poll for some potential meeting dates and times. Is there anything that you would like to add to, we talked about tonight, presented comments, suggestions, thoughts?
Angie, Sean Blackburn. I just wanted to mention that there, it seems to be no conversation or discussion of anything to do with solar or light industrial, so I'm kind of curious about our approach to that.
So Sean, we definitely can put that on the parking lot, if you will, in terms of something that would likely come up or has come up. Obviously, it's no secret that the planning commission has recommended an aisle, some applications, and the board will be hearing another one in the next couple of weeks. So in terms of focusing on the comprehensive plan and what did we hear, we would like to continue to work on that list. But knowing that if the direction from the planning commission and the board changed, and we need to do something, if you will, with solar, something different, or take a pause, then that would have to be supplemented into this process. Hopefully, that helps, Sean.
Thank you.
Well, it's one minute before seven, and I don't need to keep you all any longer than you've already committed, but if there's anything else that you'd like to share as a group, feel free to pipe in. Otherwise, you know how it's handled with me.
Yeah, Angie, as we're talking about schedules, you know how things oftentimes get busy in December, and so people don't want to have meetings in December. So by all means, it would be good if we could get at least two meetings in before the end of the year. So rather than put something off and then try to squeeze it all into November, I guess I would like to see us at least get a couple meetings in before the holidays.
Can do. Thank you. Well, to the extent that people that you talk to are interested in what we're doing with Shape Stearns and implementing our zoning ordinance changes, do know that, again, these meetings are being broadcast, so you can share these with others. Share the link to the Shape Stearns website, keep people engaged. I know we have some ideas for polls, especially as it relates to RVs and some shorelands. So stay tuned, and I appreciate everybody's time tonight. And as we move forward in this process, we're excited to be working with you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.